Appeals meeting to order, can we start with the roll call?
James Meyer.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
All right, we do have a quorum, so we can start the meeting. We are expecting the other two members to join us a little bit later, so, but we do have three members, so we do have a quorum. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Upcoming meetings, we have Tuesday, May 22nd, and Tuesday, June 26th. If you are assigned for a public hearing, please make sure the proper date is on your sign. We have some changes to our agenda, there is nothing going to happen on items one and two, and the applicant has withdrawn application number four. So that leaves only three things on our agenda this evening, so. We do have one set of minutes to approve, we have the minutes of March 27th, with some very slight amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 27th?
Shall move.
Second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I have been asked to make a statement that if, just as a reminder, if you, when you finish with this board, when we grant a variance, this is a reminder that you're supposed to go to the building department to make sure you have all the appropriate permits. Just because we're giving you a variance doesn't mean you actually have the appropriate permits to get your built, your structures built. So, with that said, as I said, there's no action on items number one and two, which are both decisions, so we're gonna go right to issue, item number three, which is a public hearing. This is the only public hearing of the evening, so this is the only opportunity, or the only application that we would be looking for neighbors to comment on. The other two applications we'll see tonight are just here essentially for the first time, so they're just for review at this point. So item number three is a public hearing, Appeal 3868 Nace, Kyle and Alicia Nace, 25 Oakbrook Lane, La Grangeville, New York, are requesting an 18-foot front line variance for a proposed house at 33 Mountain Pass with the intersection of Geneva Drive, Hopewell Junction pursuant to Section 194-100 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Shall move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi there.
Hello.
All right, so last time we were here, we reviewed your application. I know we asked a couple questions about why this size of a house, whether you had some flexibility, et cetera. I actually took the time to do a site visit, I drove by there. I have to tell you, I'm really disappointed at how that site looks. All the trees are totally cut down, but they're not cut down to the ground. So it's like, there's all these stumps, the lot is just horrible, it looks horrible right now. So in, as far as being a good neighbor, it really, I mean, I understand, you probably have to leave them like that because of erosion control, and I do understand that, you know, you had to cut them down because of the potential of it being a nesting area for Indiana bat, or whatever it was that you had to deal with, that you had to cut the trees down by April 1st. But, it really, I don't know that you had to cut down all those trees on the lot, and so it's a shame that, I think you're leaving like, three trees.
The front area, that's almost all septic, you know, ends up being a lot of septic in that front area, and that's, you know, if you look at the plan, almost everything's septic in that front, so we were very, we tried to leave as many as possible, almost all of them needed to go. The ones that we wanted to keep, actually, ended up having rot in it unfortunately, so there was some that were on the edges that ended up being rotten, so we need, those needed to come down soon.
That helps, but I'll tell you, as somebody who would have to, and not me, but as a, you know, thinking of the neighbors, who have to drive by that lot every single day and look at it, I just hope that your landscaper, whoever it is, is gonna get, your builder is gonna get in there quickly and really cut down the rest of those trees.
Like, we, we-
But seeing a clearing, a cleared lot is even better than seeing these five-foot stumps.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, it was just that, that's how they kinda came in, they said, okay, this is it, and like, we had the plan to keep a lot more, but then when they came through, they were just like, this is rotted, this is rotted, this is rotted.
Okay.
We even had Central Hudson come in, 'cause a lot of the trees were tangled in the electric lines as well, and they were like, there's no point in saving these trees, so.
Okay, all right.
And like he said, in the, in the plans, the septic is all in the front, that's where we would get the frontage.
So that's gonna be, all those are gonna be-
It's gonna be all cleared out.
All flat, quickly, quickly.
And you're, you're, at the end of the day, you're gonna do some landscaping to-
Absolutely, naturally.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
To replace those, because-
Yeah, no, 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 we have plans to bring in trees again.
Yeah.
It was just unfortunate that-
Especially as the turn, as the cars turn to go into Geneva, you're gonna get all those headlights coming into your home as well.
Yes, exactly.
When we spoke to the McCormicks across the street from Geneva, that's exactly what Lynette had said, is you better get some, you know, frontage area, because you're gonna get, you're gonna get blinded out, so absolutely, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be well done.
Yeah, it was a bit of a surprise when we actually had the professionals come in, and it was like, nope, nope, nope.
Rotted, rotted, rotted.
And we're like, oh, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess now is the time to cut them down, but like I said, just the way the lot looks right now is, I'm hoping it's not gonna stay that way.
Oh, no, I mean, that's why we're here.
So, in driving around the neighborhood, I do have to tell you that the, this is an area of Little Switzerland, where it's very modest-sized homes, okay? Much further up the hill is where, you know, behind the pillars, or where you've got the very, you know, much grander homes. There were several houses on that stretch of the road there that were sprawling ranches, not two-story, sprawling ranches, and those, so they were, they obviously had very wide lots, and they were very wide houses. But the rest of the homes there were actually quite modest-sized, and actually, you know, the home and the garage were frankly almost equal-sized. So the homes were, they are, you know, were not quite as large as a footprint of what you're proposing, and I do understand you do have a garage, the three-car garage in your, in the footprint of your house. But the other thing that I looked for, because right now you're proposing that you come up the driveway on the right of the house, and then you have to turn into the garage from there, which with a three-car garage, I understand that's what, why you're trying to do that. But because of that needing the turnaround, and the ability to back out and then be able to pull out, you're now 35 feet away from that neighbor to your right, when the setback requirement is really only 25 feet. So I went around the neighborhood with, specifically to see how many neighbors have front pull-in garages, and right in the immediate area, there, I counted four that had, so it's not uncommon in that neighborhood to have garages that you just pull right into. So if you could, if you could redesign your house and have your garages so you pull right in, again, it cuts back 10 feet at least from the setback that you need, because then you can put your house 10 feet closer, you go right to the 25-foot setback on the side there, and your 18-foot variance that you need is already down to eight feet. But you now have garages in the front of your house. I'm just making that as, you know, as an observation of what I saw. But again, the biggest issue that I have, and I know I brought this up last time, is the footprint of your house is, I think it can be reduced, all right? What, your, the professional, the person who was here with you last time mentioned, and it, 'cause I had to refresh myself, that I, in the minutes, it reflects that the dimensions of the house are 59 feet by 51 feet, which is over 3,000 square feet. I don't think it's that large.
Oh, no.
I thought when we did some calculations on that before, the house was closer to 21, 2200 square feet footprints.
That's, that's all it is, yeah.
Okay, but it is a two-story house, and yes, I, it's a raised ranch, so you do have, it's, so you do have the downstairs with the garages, so yes, the garages are probably gonna take a half of that downstairs footprint, but, so you're gonna end up with a 3,000-plus square foot house approximately, which for that neighborhood is, is quite grand, so I'm, I'm really, my opinion is that I'm really thinking you should revisit with your architect the design of the house.
The across-the-street neighbor directly across from us just listed their house for sale, it's 30, I think it's 32 to 3,300 square feet.
Okay.
I mean-
Was it, is that one of the ranches, though?
That's a ranch.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there are definitely some sprawling ranches that don't have a-
It's like, it's similar to ours, it's stacked, it's a raised.
Okay.
And that's right across the street.
It's not, it, they're, as I said, they are-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, directly across from us in Geneva is a pretty sizable house, too.
But they didn't need a variance to build their house, that's one of the issues, okay? And so when you're before this board looking for a variance, what you're looking for is not allowed, and so you actually have to come to us to explain to us that you really have no other options. And so what I'm, in my opinion, you have other options. Perhaps the, the house that you're proposing for this lot is not the best fit for this lot, that's my opinion, okay? I'm only one of the now four members that are here this evening. And yes, I, you, I thank you for reminding me that we do have a couple neighbor letters, so, and we'll go to, get board members' comments first, but then I do wanna read into the record these couple letters that we have. So comments or questions from other board members, let's start with that.
Now, I mean, I know that, on the town review, I was questioning how much room we needed on that side for even the turnaround, do you need the full 35 feet? Even if you kept the garages on the side, do you need that much space between the house and the lot on that side? It seems to me, the standard car is 20 feet, if you have 30 feet, even you reduce it by five feet, you get closer to the yard on your, if you're looking at the right-hand side.
If, if, if that's the difference in making this happen, I mean, five, five feet, we were trust, you know, certainly trying to be good neighbors on the other side as well.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, there's gotta, you know, compromise at least on that, but, yeah, again, I'm just asking that question, I'm not sure you have to maximize the distance away on that side. Tara, look at it, I thought maybe she had a comment after she was finished looking, I'm sorry.
Where's the, where's the front of the house gonna be, is it gonna be on the Geneva?
Facing mountain.
Facing mountain.
No, facing mountain, yes.
Which, which is consistent with the rest of the street.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yeah. No, it's not required that the front of the house be on Mountain Pass, it's just required that the driveway access be on Mountain Pass. All right, according to the plan, so. All right, so there are two letters, let me read these into the record. The one is, the first one is dated April 17th, from Barry and Lynette McCormick, "We received the zoning notice concerning the variance for a proposed house at 33 Mountain Pass Road. We live at 27 Mountain Pass Road, across Geneva Road from the proposed house. After physically viewing the markers at the site, we believe the proposed variance does not adversely affect the aesthetic of the neighborhood or cause any physical impediment, and as such, we have no problem with this variance." The second one is dated April 21st, from William Hudson, "At zoning board meeting last month, I was struck by your initial impression with the above referenced matter when it came before the board. I believe your comment was something like, oh, can't you build a smaller house? At reviewing the building plans on record, I too share that sentiment. The Little Switzerland neighborhood was always, has always been distinguished by large homes on appropriately proportioned lots, while homes in the neighborhood that are on lots that are joined two streets are in compliance with 50-foot setback rule. My feeling is that granting this variance will disrupt the overall appearance of the neighborhood, possibly affecting home values in the future. I would like to go on the record as being not in favor of granting a variance." And this residence is at 38 Mountain Pass. Okay, so, so you have two rec, two letters that are now in the record. So are there any other comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, and just, I didn't have my copy of the survey with me, but even on the survey, you're, what they planned for the turnaround is several feet away from the property line, so if you minimize that turnaround and you get it up to the property line for your driveway, I think we can get, you know, maybe at least get your request down to the half.
The only problem is, is then where do you put snow, where do you, you know, you're now impacting that neighbor right next door by having that lot right there.
Except that, I would expect that when they plow, they're gonna basically plow most of it straight off the end of it.
Right off there.
Off the top, off the- Off the, behind their house, yeah.
Behind their house. Until they put a fence up to fence in their backyard.
So, you mean just move over the driveway?
Which is the other thing, I guess, based on that, the other existing houses, if you go to the other corner of Geneva Drive.
The one above?
The houses, do you have houses facing Geneva Drive?
There are, the ones starting right behind face Geneva.
The houses on Mountain Pass, all face Mountain Pass.
Yeah, so maybe on the other side face Mountain Pass as well.
Right.
Yeah, they all, we lined up pretty much exactly with the rest of the neighbors facing Mountain Pass, 'cause that's also where they told, it says to put the driveway, 'cause it's starting behind us, that one driveway is right at our line. It's not on this map, but.
Even then, not reduce it, but if you face it the other way, then you wouldn't have any problems either.
I actually agree with you, but then they'd have to put a lot of screening up to, so the rest of the street isn't looking at the side of a house.
Either way, yeah.
In terms of Mountain Pass, it would be the one that would be facing a different direction.
Understood, now?
I know I came in a couple of minutes late from this discussion, but did your architect have other, like, a different orientation for the house, still facing Mountain Pass, but oriented a little differently inside to be narrower in one direction and longer in the other?
They kinda went on our-
Yeah, you know, these were kinda the plans that we had kinda created with the architect, and-
We created with them, yeah.
So you never explored sort of shrinking and growing?
You know, the, the current plan as it is, we've certainly, now that we've, you know, needed to come and see, see you guys, have certainly tried to, it's gonna need to be a whole, it's gonna need to be a whole redesign.
Be whole, redesign.
Well, I mean, 'cause that's the other thing, I mean, if you wanted to keep the face, but it was narrow, but you made it longer back, I don't know, that, that would satisfy everything, you wouldn't need a variance, but if you're looking at redesign, I'm not sure how far. Is this something that's being stick-built?
It would be a whole redesign.
It's a stick-built.
It's a stick-built, yeah, non-modular.
Want me to open up for comments?
Yeah, we could do that, I'm just looking for, I mean, the other thing you have to consider where you're gonna situate the house is when you wanna do things in the future, and to what kind of variance you may need, like a pool and that kind of stuff, where you're gonna put that stuff?
We're not, I'm not into the pool quite yet.
Yeah, sure, you say that now.
That's a fact.
No, that is a fact.
It's a fact.
The pool is going on the back.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have room in the back, the back's got lots of land back there.
Yeah, but you still have, that's a front yard, that's why we're here for a variance.
I'm not in, that's not for me.
Yeah.
All right, there's, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Kyle and Alicia Nace, 25 Oakbrook Lane, La Grangeville, requesting an 18-foot front line variance for a proposed house at 33 Mountain Pass with the intersection of Geneva Drive? Come on up. If you don't mind anybody who speaks, there's a clipboard on the table there, after you're done, please print your name.
Teresa Scribner.
Just get to the microphone, please.
Teresa Scribner.
Thank you.
And we're right next door at 35 Mountain Pass, and I agree with you about the, the way the lot looks. It's been an I sort of say the least.
Yeah.
I have voiced my concerns before. They did take down every tree, which was heartbreaking to see, that they didn't leave anything, and they did take down one of ours without, so I wished I had had a survey tape to know if in fact they took down all the appropriate trees. However, that being said, it is a little disconcerting that they figured out a plan that went above without even consulting or looking at the possibility of staying within the realm of the 18 feet. The one neighbor across the way, Lynette McCormick, who is okay with it, is on a hill, she would be up above them, and we would be right next to them, so, and I know there's a few neighbors that could not attend the meeting, that were equally concerned about the size of the house, and would it leave, as you said, a big footprint in the neighborhood, because aesthetically, you want it to look like it belongs.
Right.
And we want enough buffer in between us to put trees and things of that sort, and I think if you bring the driveway, and I don't know the exact things, if you bring it right along the side there, and the three-car garage, the three-car garage is facing this way, I think it's gonna look very monstrous, to say the least, and the footage alone. And it's a being a corner lot, also a safety issue, I would think, I was wondering why the code was erected, was it, was it instituted because of aesthetics, was it for safety issues, what, what was that code that is, that they need the variance for?
The 15, the, sorry, the 50, the two front yards?
The 18 that they, yeah.
That was the wisdom of the town board, at whatever point in time.
No, I, I agree with it, because otherwise you're gonna have sprawling conglomerates that look, don't fit into the neighborhood scheme, so that is my concern as well, and I'm not totally for it, because I wish something else would have been redesigned as far as not taking every square feet, and then I'm concerned because they're not really leaving too much of a buffer if anything's done, and something else that we do have to address, but that would be with another department, I understand, is possible drainage, because if you're not allowing for the drain, the proper amount for your drainage, that's a concern.
Okay.
So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm not sure I wanna close the public hearing, 'cause I think I wanna give you guys an opportunity to think about the comments that you've heard tonight, and perhaps come back with what your options are.
Yeah, if you say you're gonna do a redesign, then you, you really got us to talk about.
The engineering redesign.
Yeah, with, with those concerns, see what you can do. I mean, you know, she asked why, why two front yards, and, and off the top of my head, one would be aesthetics, the other is sightlines. You come around a corner and you have houses that are right next to each other, that creates a tunnel effect when cars are going down the road.
Right.
And that, that is a traffic hazard for people driving on the road, they don't tend to notice what's going around the houses or nearby the houses, may miss children playing, that kind of stuff, you don't wanna have a tunnel effect on a road. So there's reasons, good reasons, why the, we treat houses on a corner with two front yards in order to increase the setback requirements. So I would, you know, sincerely ask you to, to look at that and see what you can do to prefer, to preserve the setback requirement on the other side, okay?
To the full 50, or at least?
As best as you can, you know, look at it, the smaller it gets, the easier it makes it for us to say yes, okay?
I, I can only think of one instance where this board, in the eight years I've been on it, has granted a variance for new construction, and it was to accommodate a disability.
Yep.
All right, we don't generally grant, because you, because you can't say it's, it's not self-created, you're doing this of your own desire to, because you want something specific. So it's really tough for us to consider when there's codes that everybody else in town lives with.
You know, and I look at it, and I say, well, what happens if it was a cape, and you had the answers from the side, but you had the front facing it, and then it went back, so you had rooms coming off the back, so it became a cape with rooms being elongated, maybe sort of like a, an extended ranch or something, I think there's some things that could be done. I don't know if there's, you have a particular like for a raised ranch, or that's what you're looking at, or what's going on.
It's a particular look we really enjoyed, and we kinda, when we were re-engineering it, we kinda took into effect like, our neighbors and that, like, we are purposely moving slightly more over, so then we have that spacing between our two neighbors, and then also the, the one house that's literally across from us is, they don't have the 50, so we kinda looked at them, and we're like, let's try to make it even, so then when you do turn onto Geneva, you see Lynette's house on the left, you see our house on the left, it would be almost identical in the sense of spacing between the road and the house.
Yeah, see, and one thing I was looking at, when you look at your survey map, you know, sometimes it makes it easier if, if the property line's, you know, quite a distance away from the edge of the road, like, if you look in the front on your survey map, it's a, you know, a fair distance, maybe 12 feet or so between the edge of the road and your property line on the side that you wanna go up to the property line on.
Yeah, it's, it's technically 40 feet, if you're doing straight from that house, I mean, it says to the pavement, so.
My point is, is it's not that far.
Setback is to your property line.
Yeah, yeah, the setback's to your property line, but it, you know, your property line's not far off the road, is my point, so again, for the reasons that I would be concerned with the sightlines and aesthetics, you're not getting an advantage of the road being 20 feet away from your property line, so, I think.
So, so, do we have-
You hear what I'm saying?
No, I, no, I do, I'm, I'm just trying to think, so it's gonna mean, you know, a full, a full, a full redesign, and really, you know, if you, what I'm hearing is where there hasn't been a, a new construction variance granted before.
At least not-
Not that I'm aware of, and I've been here for a long time.
Except for the one for a disability on a, on a smaller, on a development that specifically was designed for smaller lots.
Yeah, so, see that, I mean, that's the problem, is the chairperson indicated, the, one of the things we have to look at is whether the hardship is self-created, when you come in with a plan that you've, you're proposing to us, you're telling us, we want this, and you're creating the hardship. Certainly, a, a small house could go on there without any setback requirements at all, but that's one of the requirements we have to look at, who's creating the hardship? You know, if it's, if it's a really weird piece of property and we couldn't get around it, that may be one thing.
That's different.
But this isn't a weird piece of property, on the narrow side-
It's a narrow lot.
But, you know, unfortunately, a lot of times that's why subdivision-
You've seen a lot in narrower lots.
Yeah, that's, they do that, I got the same problem on the house that I just put up, I got both sides, I'm up against the setback requirements, but, you know.
All right, so, you wanna come back next month? What is it that you wanna do?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month.
Shall move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, again, that was the, our only public hearing for the evening, so the last two applications before us are reviews, however, for item number four, we do have to make a motion to do a refund, the applicant has withdrawn his application, so I need a motion to refund $70 of his $75 application fee, do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
I'm third.
All right, so item number five, Appeal 3869, Bonomo, Bonomo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Daniel J. Bonomo, 53, East Tilden Place, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 15-foot rear-line variance for a proposed 18-foot by 50-foot deck extension pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, hi.
So this is the first we're seeing here application, we understand that this is a house in the Hopewell Glen Development.
Correct.
Which is a development, again, that is smaller lots, as we mentioned, that was, that was the development where we actually saw the request for a new construction to accommodate a disability, they needed a first-floor plan that accommodated a wheelchair. So in this case, I understand there's an issue related to your wanting a larger deck, the, the house that you've bought has an, has an existing deck already, right, but the size of it is pretty small.
It's eight by tw, eight by 10.
It's eight by 10, exactly.
Can I show you a photo?
I think we, we saw the, oh, you have actual pictures of it, that's great, thank you. I don't remember seeing it as part of the application, no. So off the back of the house is an eight-by-10-foot deck, and so what you're asking, from my understanding of the application, is you're now asking to come out-
18 feet.
18 feet from the rear of the, from the farthest, furthest-most point of the house, because you have multiple levels to the rear of your house, and then going across the entire back length of your house.
Correct.
So that's where the 50 feet, so 18 feet by 50 feet is an 800-square-foot deck, plus you're adding in the other areas, so please, we need-
Excuse me, could I, I need to-
Yeah, no, go ahead, that's fine, with, without, I don't wanna be adding, you know, personal information on the record, but if we could have some justification, some explanation why there is a need for this would be really helpful, and I do understand there is, you know-
Right.
There is a request, in essence, for an accommodation.
That's the reason we have a disability, and my wife is, suffered a brain tumor, she had a malignant brain tumor two years ago, was opened and removed, and it left her with a severe disability, where uneven surfaces are very hard to navigate, I enclosed a letter from the arthrothematologist with my application, that walking down steps onto like, a platform would be very difficult for her because of the resulting brain tumor she had. I'm a physician also, and my wife takes care of my practice with me, and because of And because of that, the small deck doesn't give much outdoor living space, so we were trying to expand it and we found that the setback rule is 30 feet. We only have a 33-foot yard.
Right, you really have no.
Doesn't leave any work at all, so that's why we're here for the area variance. And we thought 18 feet was okay with the, with the board. The HOA, the Homeowners Association Board granted us the 15-feet setback, but the town has a 30-foot setback. So we got an acceptance from the Homeowners Association to do 15 feet from the back property line, which would give us an 18-foot deck. And that's what we're trying to get today.
Okay, do you know what the footprint of your house is?
What the what?
Footprint of your house is? What's the size of the first floor of your house?
Twenty, 2100 square feet approximately. I have, I have the survey right here.
That's like.
Yeah, would you like to see?
Yeah, but I'm not.
Have a copy right here if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 2100, more or less 2100 square feet. And it's, it's on a tiny lot.
Yep.
It's on a tiny lot, but you do actually have dedicated open space behind you, so you're, you would never have any impact on any neighbor behind you because of the dedicated open space.
Correct.
One of the reasons this development was created with smaller cluster lots was to create a protected open space around the development.
Correct.
So that there is extra spaces for trails and for other, you know, for other.
There are some very high trees right on our property line, almost 15 or so feet high white pine trees. And then there's a big gully and then there's a, a privacy fence behind it. So there's quite a bit of distance from our property line to the nearest neighbor in going back.
All right, are you planning on putting a roof over this deck?
No.
Your existing deck has a roof.
Well, that's an, yeah, that's an overhang. It's part of the house, it's an overhang.
Right.
But no, I'm not planning on putting any kind of roof over that proposed deck.
Will there be any stairs to the grass or no?
No. No, for security reasons, privacy and, you know, because we're right on Bridge Street. The back of the house faces Bridge Street and we didn't want to have any kind of issues with people walking up or coming on the deck, so.
I can't maneuver any stairs, so I don't want any stairs put in because I can't maneuver the stairs.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're trying to keep it, you know, as flat as we can for her visual problems.
Okay.
And so, and so you say you have the approval from the Homeowners Association? What, what does that involve?
Well, I had to apply to them and show them a plan and explain to them why I'm asking for this and they, they have a 15-foot setback rule in their board, on their bylaws, and they approved a 15-foot setback.
So you're complying with their 15-foot rule?
Correct, it's approved pending the town variance.
Okay, just, I, just to explain it to us, why does, why does it have to be 18 feet deep? Why can't it be 15 feet deep? I mean, you can fit a table, you can fit multiple chairs there, you know, you'd need eight, you'd need eight-foot, you know, a chaise lounge or something like that. I'm just trying to get a sense of.
I'm trying to, to meet the compliance of the, of the Homeowners Association, which is a 15-foot.
Well, that's to maximize it.
Yeah, to maximize, exactly.
Okay.
To maximize the Homeowners Association rules and to make the room as big as possible for my wife's needs and for entertaining and being, having outdoor living.
So.
It's.
So 15.
Come on.
But it's not going to be 18 the whole length, right?
It's going to be, in some places, it's more than 18.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 18 and then it breaks up these three different parts of the deck.
And, and, and the reason why I, I need it, let's say I were to go into a space.
Most of it's more than 18.
That there's a wall or there's something, or trees.
Okay.
I, I feel as though the whole thing comes at me, even we downsized from a 5100 square foot house after I got ill and being in a coma and didn't even know if I would get up, then I couldn't navigate. So even now at the house, I can't even use the front stairs. I go through the garage and I have the hole to go up.
Okay.
Because if I get, let's say I walk outside and there's a step down and I miss it, my whole vision goes. I, I just can't see it. Or if I come in to a room and the closets are open or anything in my visual field, I, I would bump my head because the, the problem is with the vision, it's normally I had 20/20 before, but then when I, this problem happened, it changed my whole life. So when I go outside, we have the whole bunch of trees there. I need to know, and we're not party people, we have no kids or anything like that. So I want to be able to put like my chair and like a recliner or something out there where I could come out of the kitchen and just walk on one level and just look around and just see because the, the trees and then there's a houses right there. It, it is just a horrible thing. I do not think I would ever be in my life at this state and point. But the, the thing about, and even our neighbors, we were very good, him being a doctor, he, you know, we're always there for them. But they know, even with me, with the vision, with stuff and the trampolines and stuff, they keep it far away because my visual field is so obstructed. So a little couple of feet gives me like a thing, like a step more. Looking at that, I see four, four stairs there, over there.
Where there's one.
She's wearing Prizm.
No, no, I know, I, I, I understand that. I, I actually had a sister that had a brain tumor and totally lost vision in one eye, so I totally understand what you're saying.
So for a space is something, and when we pick that out.
Yeah.
We want a smaller thing. We'd never anticipated that the backyard had the variances and stuff.
My point was that she's, she has a real need and so she sees the world differently than the rest of us are seeing it. That was my only reason for making that observation, that it's, she sees four steps and it's really one. She's not, she's not seeing the world as, as it is. So I, I'm getting why you're needing the larger space.
No, I don't see.
The explanation has been really helpful.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll just sit back.
No, that's okay, that's all right. Have you had a, it sounds like you've had conversations with your neighbors.
Yes.
So are they worried about the size of this? Are you going to be putting some extra screening up so that, that, you know, you'll put some trees in between you?
There'll be, there's, the, the, the house is on a cul-de-sac, so the, the houses are kind of in a circle.
Okay.
So everyone's yard is kind of just.
At an angle to the others.
Quite an angle. So nobody's right there.
Okay.
And there's, the back is all high white pine trees.
Because in that development, those houses are quite close to each other, so.
Yes, and on the cul-de-sac, they're kind of on a circle. So there's nobody, you know, they're not directly against.
So in addition to the open space behind you, you actually have the benefit of being on the circle that your neighbors are not going to be.
And we have very good neighbors.
Directly impacted by this.
Social with and they're very, they're very good people. They have no problem with it.
Just understand that you're the owners of the house now, but at some point in the future, there could be own, other owners of this house who then come in with a 50-foot deck and may be entertainers. So that's why I'm, I have to worry about not just your use and understanding the physical need for this, but the next users of this house may have children and may be a very different perspective. So this, to the extent that there's screening and there's less visual impact to those neighbors makes, it's really important, again, not just for you, but for the, from your neighbor's perspective for the future users of the house.
Ms. Drummond, if there was like something on the deck, like some kind of privacy fencing on the deck, is that something you're alluding to with screening?
No, 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 I'm actually thinking of a couple of trees or something.
Oh, trees?
Yeah.
I said there were some white pines on the back.
You're pretty close to the, the, your deck's not that high off the ground, so your ability to put a, no, not necessarily pine trees, to put a couple of trees or something to block or to at least break up the vision of it?
Yeah, there are some on the border, just a few. They don't give you many, but.
Right.
We were considering adding more to make it a little bit more private, but we haven't done that yet.
If your neighbors comment or if they, you know, are asking for some kind of screening, that I think that would be something to offer to them, would be that you could put some trees up.
Well, my last house, we put up 75 trees like that and it was beautiful.
You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, we did that, exactly what you're saying. It was beautiful.
We don't have a problem if our neighbors want, trees will gladly put it up. We don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, if that becomes an issue, it would be nothing.
And I told my husband, I said, when the good Lord takes me, this is my last move. I can't do it.
Oh, I'm sure getting through the move in and of itself was.
We're not moving again.
Was traumatic, yeah.
He first, this is it for me.
Okay, the railing of your existing deck, the deck itself is wood, it matches your home. Is that what you're proposing?
Pressure-treated wood, like the photo shows, yeah, it's the exact same, that's we're going to continue that same style.
Again, we're not talking about white vinyl that's going to show up or something like that.
The exact same material you see in that photo is what we're going to use.
So it's going to blend, it's going to match the house, it's going to be like the wood element, you know?
Exactly. It's going to be the exact same style and material, just a larger size.
All right, comments or questions from board members?
All right, thank you for covering it.
So are we okay for a public hearing?
I am, yep. So I move for, move for a public hearing at our next hearing date of May, and I forget already after all this discussion. May 22nd, 2018, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, before you leave, Pam, we'll give you your instructions because you do have to put a sign on the front of your home, yes?
That's what's my next question. Do I put the sign on my lawn and put May 22nd on it?
Yes. Pam, we'll give you your instructions.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
I'm world on it.
And then we'll see you next month. To the extent that your neighbors can send you, can send in letters and I'll read them into the record, that would be helpful as well, okay?
That would be fine.
Okay?
So you'd like to buy seconds in support of the.
Whatever they're, no, you don't have to sign in because you're the actual applicant. Thank you.
Now, do I need to post this or do I need a sign?
No.
No, we tell you.
Those are the instructions.
Oh, okay, okay.
You can get the sign.
Then we won't keep you tied. Thank you, Pam.
All right, and next is item number, or agenda item number six, Appeal 3870 Meyer, William C. Meyer, Four Spring Meadow Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 7-foot rear line variance for a proposed 10-foot by 18-foot shed and a 13-foot sideline and 42-foot rear line variance for a proposed swing set pursuant to Section 194-107B3 and 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello, you're bored.
So I understand you won your title dispute.
Yes, we did.
Wow, good for you. You hung in there for a long, a long time.
A few years, let me tell you.
Well, but, but again, good when you ever go to sell your house.
Oh, yeah.
It's just so much better for you to have that issue resolved, so.
Yep.
But knowing that you have a neighbor into your rear that is challenging of his rights and of the code, can you explain to us why you're in looking for, to push the swing set so far back that you're eight feet from the property line?
Well, if you look at the, the survey, the sheet here, we've got a buried gas tank here and a gas line that goes up to the house and also in that area is the distribution box and the drain field. And what I'm trying to do is tuck it back in behind the pine trees to get it, you know, visually it'll be kind of hidden back there. I do have some pictures, I think I had a couple that I submitted.
This is the, you're the, you had that lot where there was some visual corridor for somebody down the street? Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, my, across the street, neighbor at Wright's Greenhouse is there.
Yeah.
Mrs. Wright sits out in the greenhouse to sell during the spring and summer and she likes to look up, so she likes everything, you know, tucked back in. And again, some of the other neighbors like to be able to look the other way and so they agree that.
So have you spoken with your neighbors about this?
Yes, not all of them, but some of them.
I'm going to guess not the neighbor in the rear.
No. I have a couple of pictures here that I.
Yeah, that would probably help because, again, you're putting a place that is a place that they're now on the property at all now. I understand the shed is on the property now and so you're looking to move.
This is looking back and this is the, the gas tank is buried under that and it goes towards the house. This here is the side view.
Jim?
Yeah, this is the side. The gas tank is over here, so what I'm trying to do is tuck it right back in this area here.
Oh, so you have a fence?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's a Christmas tree farm there? So there's a lot of vegetation there?
Yeah.
Did you gain Christmas trees when you put that fence up?
Pardon?
Did you gain some Christmas trees when you put that fence?
This is the.
It's looking from the side.
Mm-hmm, that's the Christmas tree. What's this again?
That's the cap for the buried propane tank, the 500-gallon tank.
It looks like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this just looks real big there. It's that big, it looks like it's three feet across.
It's pretty big.
Yeah, really.
It kind of looks like you almost want to like put little kids' chairs around it and make a play table out of it or something.
It's all planted around, so summertime, that grows up.
Oh, okay, that would help, yeah.
Round around it, yeah, okay.
That would help, okay. Can we put those pictures in the, in our file if you don't mind or?
Sure.
Okay, good, thank you. Just in case, that's okay, don't worry.
Ah, nobody knows who I am.
Just in case any neighbors, just in case any neighbors want to come in and review the file, they can, they can see these. I appreciate it. So, so where is the shed now? I guess that would be helpful to understand and why can't it stay where it is?
Okay, the shed is over here. It's not in this picture, I have another picture.
Yeah, we have a picture of the shed, but. And so here's your fence.
Yes. And there's two big pine trees, there's one on each side of it. And what I'm trying to do is.
Tuck it in more?
Tuck it in further and what I want to do, this is a 10 by 14, now I want to increase it to a 10 by 18, so I want to move it back and then add four feet on it.
Toward the tree?
Well, I got to be behind the tree because I can't move it that way because of the tree.
Right now, the tree is in your sideboard expansion area.
Pardon?
So right now, the tree is in your lengthwise expansion area, what you're saying?
It's actually in.
From the rear yard, a shed now needs only 10 feet?
On a, less than 144 is 25.
Oh, that's right, sorry. No, what, what?
No, they changed the sheds.
Yeah, they changed them. What's the shed?
15.
15?
It's 15 feet for a shed now.
So that's a, a second change? Because it was.
Yeah.
It was under like 96, I think.
They just changed it last year.
Yeah, they just changed it.
They changed it last year.
Yeah.
To your benefit?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
The setback was 15 and you can put up a 144, confusing things, I think. You put up 144 without a permit.
Yes.
Do you want to make this how big?
Would be 180.
Okay.
It's 140 now, I want to add another 40, or by 10.
Okay, and so right now, you're talking, where, how far away from the property is line is it now, 25 feet? 25 feet?
Little over 25, yes.
And just moving it back 10 feet's not enough? You can do the 10 feet without a per, without needing us?
I'd have to check because of the one pine tree.
I mean, I, I see you have a significant difference between the pine trees and there, so.
This pine tree right here. I'm not sure. That's why I said I wanted it 12 feet off the property line versus the 15 because of motor to make it the, added the four feet, I'll be into the tree. I have to measure that to see if the, how close that would be.
When you make it to four feet, you can't move it a little over to one side?
I can't go towards the property line. There's another pine tree there also.
Because right now, you're keeping it 25 feet. So you have the same 15 feet from that side.
Yeah, so you can.
It's 25 off the side unless that changed.
It's all changed.
15 feet all the way around.
15 feet, yes. Be careful.
You can do it again.
I know who I am, but that's, you know. So.
There's another big pine tree. There's.
So you need to measure and find out whether you can fit it in, though.
There's one here, and then there's, you can see the other one right here. And I was going to move right back between those two.
What I'm wondering is if, well, if you can go off the back as opposed to going off the side. But kind of, that really, wouldn't really work. Do you have, do you have some flexibility with that? I, I understand you got to go measure where your trees are. But understanding that the code is now 15 feet, do you have?
You have to go measure just to see where that would be on the.
The shed would be 15, the swings would still be the 25?
The swings are still 25, yeah. And the swings can't fit in this area anywhere?
This is swinging, this is.
That's where the, just as we should box it.
Guess that to Pam for the layout application.
Where do we, yeah.
Swings have to be 25.
25. Does anybody live near that area? I could meet them there and show them the deck. I'm trying to do.
I can come out and meet you. That's fine. I don't, I don't mind. Probably would be helpful. I mean, I want to see what we can do. Work, I want to see if we can work with the existing code to at least minimize or eliminate one of the variances. I understand for the swing set, you still have to deal with the 25 feet. So that, that's a different issue.
There's a good chance you can move, you can jockey that shed around and still meet them.
That's what I'm wondering. Could you shift it around a bit? Working within those trees is just, you can see from the spacing of the trees